All right then. Calling to order, the February 11th, 2020 meeting of the Town and Quarter Madera Planning Commission, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Commissioner Metcalfe?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Bandell?
Here.
Thank you. So tonight, we get to, we have one thing we have to take care of, and that's public comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So the people in this room, if you have anything you want to say about something that's not on the agenda, you have three minutes to step up to the microphone. We have a taker, it looks like.
I just wanted to-
Would you wait for the-
Is it going there? Lucinda Smith, here in Quarter Madera. I just wanted to take a very brief moment to say thank you to the town, not only the council, the planning commission, but the public works, for a couple of things. There's an upcoming abatement program that you have allowed money to be spent for, which we very much appreciate up on Althway, Altha Terrace, and I wanted to let you know how much we appreciate that. Also, I wanted to say thank you for the prompt sweeper cleaning that came up at 6:00 on Monday morning to clean up all the branches and leaves and mess on the streets. It was very much appreciated and extremely timely. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda. No one else, I gather? So we'll close the public comment and go directly to our public hearings. Tonight, we have two items. The first one is entitled 801 Tamalpais Drive Lazy Boy Furniture Store. This is a public hearing for a design review and a signed permit application for modifications to the existing commercial building, site improvements, and associated signs at 801 Tamalpais Drive. So Martha, this is your item, so please.
Good evening, Chair Chase, members of the commission. First item before you this evening is a design review and sign permit application for the Lazy Boy. The project site is located at 801 Tamalpais Drive. The site is approximately 36,600 square feet, and it is an odd-shaped lot that has three street frontages, which includes on the west, Paradise Drive, on the north, Tamalpais Drive, and on the east, San Clemente Drive. Located south of the project site is an existing car dealership. The project site is located within the Paradise Drive-San Clemente specific plan. The specific plan was adopted in 1979 in response to the poor and degraded condition of many of the properties in the area. I've included the boundaries of the specific plan. It is bound by San Clemente Drive on the east, and then Paradise Drive on the west, and then the Amy's Building, which is currently under construction, is also included in the specific plan. On this slide are some pictures of buildings that have been approved since the adoption of the specific plan. On the left-hand side is the Amy's Building, which is currently under construction. On the upper right-hand side is the central self-storage, and then down below is the San Clemente Place Housing Project. There is an existing building on the site that is just over 10,000 square feet. This was constructed in the late 1990s, and the applicant was Lazy Boy. They utilized the building for about 12 years, and then leased it for the past 10 years to the Home Consignment Center. The building is stucco material with brown and cream colors, and there are wood trellis features on three of the elevations, on the north, west, and east elevations. The prior tenant had three wall signs, again, on the northwest and east elevations, and these are the elevations that face the streets. The existing building is highlighted in green. As part of the project, the applicant is proposing some site modifications. There are two existing ADA parking spaces, which they will be upgrading to meet current ADA standards. In addition, they will be providing an accessible path of travel from the right-of-way from San Clemente Drive to the building. There are 26 parking spaces on the site, and the applicant is not proposing any changes to the number or the dimensions of the parking spaces. And there is an existing monument sign located at the entrance, and as part of the project, the applicant proposes to reface that monument sign. And there is currently just one entrance to the site from Paradise Drive. There is no access from either Tamalpais or San Clemente. This slide shows the proposed elevations on the north and west elevations. The applicant is proposing a kind of entry element on the front to help emphasize the main entrance. The height of this structure at its tallest is 25 feet, and the current building has a maximum height on the main entrance of 19 feet. A similar feature is also proposed on the west elevation, and this has a height of 20 feet. And the color scheme that is proposed includes cream, tan, brown, and then blue at the entrance. And I've included a picture on the right-hand side of a Lazy Boy that was recently constructed in Northern California, and this is to give you some context of the colors that are proposed. This picture here, this element, is 32 feet, so it's taller than the proposed element on the Quarter Madera store. And these are the elevations on the east and south. The east elevation faces San Clemente Drive, and the applicant is proposing to retain the trellis features on this elevation, and the south elevation is not visible from really As part of the project, staff evaluated the existing landscaping conditions. Staff and the applicant walked the site and identified areas where landscaping was sparse, and I've included some of these pictures on this slide. The picture on the left is kind of near the entrance. It's along Paradise Drive. Picture in the middle is at the entrance where the existing monument sign is located. Picture on the upper right-hand corner is a landscape planter that's adjacent to the west elevation, and the picture on the lower right-hand corner is along San Clemente Drive. And as part of the project, the applicant is proposing to install new ground cover and shrubs. The landscape plan on the right shows all of the proposed new planting, and then you can see in kind of this gray area, gray color, is the existing landscaping that will be retained as well. So here, you can see most of the new planting is along San Clemente Drive, and that really is the area of the site where the landscaping is most sparse. This area right here was that planter area that did not have any vegetation. The applicant is proposing shrubs, and then also two crepe myrtle trees, which are shown at kind of either end of that building elevation. And then this here is the existing monument sign, and the applicant is proposing new shrubs and ground cover in that portion of the site. And then the plant images show the plant palette for the landscaping. As part of the project, the applicant is also proposing signage. There are two wall signs that are proposed. On the north elevation, a proposed sign, that's a total of 118 square feet, is proposed, and on the west elevation, the proposed sign is 32 square feet. And their applicant is proposing to retain the existing monument sign, which is 2 feet in height by 12 feet in length, and they propose to reface it with a blue face with white lettering. And the proposed signage is consistent with the C4 Commercial Service zoning district in addition to the specific plan as well. And these are the required design review findings that the commission must make in order to approve the project. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the draft resolution approving the design review application PL 2019-0036 and signed permit PL 2020-0009 for a facade remodel to the existing commercial building, site modifications, and associated signage at 801 Tamalpais. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you, Martha. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Martha?
No.
Well-
I had one thought. You know, we specify and require a certain vegetation landscaping plan when things go in. Who's really responsible for maintaining that? Because obviously, I guess, the Lazy Boy was the leaseholder for the home consignment, but a lot of the landscaping fell into disrepair.
So the property owner is responsible for maintaining the landscaping, and it's, you know, if code enforcement officer or staff notices that landscaping has fallen into disrepair, then we can request that the landscaping be updated and maintained. But in this case, you know, within, with Lazy Boy not being on site, that may have led to some of the landscaping not being in the best of condition.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I had one question. So with the landscaping, it's great that they want to update it and make it new. Did you evaluate why it had perished before, and what was the, like, is it because the public's trampling it, or was it watering, or like, are there mitigation measures that are being enacted in the new one that might help not have that happen in the future in the proposal?
I mean, it's hard to know for sure. You know, there were some areas of the site where you could tell that they're being used as pedestrians walking through.
And is that where the new, where the accessible entrance is being put in that you're addressing?
Yes, I would say kind of the areas where you saw most foot traffic was along San Clemente. And then also, it's, you know, an older irrigation system that was installed in the 90s as part of the project. The irrigation system will be updated, and technology has advanced significantly in the last 20 years, so.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
I would just say then, or ask, relative to that, code enforcement officer is somebody who will have this on their agenda to make sure that it's kept up. Is that correct? Even though the ordinance doesn't specifically say that, they can do that.
Yeah, and yes, and I would like to add, there's also a condition of approval pertaining to landscape maintenance as well, that it needs to be maintained. So between those two-
Okay. The applicant may address that. Ms. Bandell?
I think everybody has already asked my, addressed my concern, but I passed that site, and it's been in disrepair for as long as I've ever passed it. So the code enforcement officer really needs to schedule-
It's a new position, so it's-
Okay.
We are complaint-based. I will note that, so if you do see stuff, please let us know.
Okay. There you go.
Peter, you and I won't have to be like you are at Nordstrom all the time. Peter and I spend more time at Nordstrom's landscaping people.
Yeah, we can always do that if need be. So it's now time for the applicant to make a presentation, so please, yes.
Hello, everyone. I am, I'm not one of the owners, but my name is Wayne Bogart. I'm TMW and Associates. I'm a design-build contractor that's been doing 25 years of construction for this family, the Kavignadals, and we just opened several new stores, and we've done a lot. And I will address what I think. I don't know, but I would just think that being a landlord and hoping the tenant takes care of things and watches things may have been the cause of some disrepair in that. They are very ownership quality presentation, all of our projects, they have Lazy Boy brand stores. I have never seen anyone that, of the 15 properties that I've built for them over the years, and that are not maintained and kept up in good quality position. So was it the absent landlord condition? Maybe. I'm confident, and along with Martha's comment about, you know, conditions, come by, remind, it won't look like that after this. And Lazy Boy Corp., who I work with in Michigan, out of their, they don't want their stores looking disrepair either. So I think it was a tenant problem, and maybe there was a condition in the lease. I don't know about who takes care of it. But on the other side of it, so I was out there today, and we were geared up to bring it back, as mentioned by Martha. They were here years ago, and he's owned the building, and for the 10-year lease that they've been away, they opened up the Emeryville store that we built and converted to good guys over there. And now they're happy to come back and actually rebrand, reopen up this store. And I was there today, and a gentleman from the neighborhood came up and said, "What's going in?" And I said, "Lazy Boy, they're back." "Yes, they're back." And so the owners are that same opportunist, and they're happy to come back to town, and you have a beautiful community, so you can enjoy the new store, the brands. And we did take a, she showed, Martha showed one of the elevations. We just opened a Visalia store and another in Modesto. And the elevations and the towers, we've actually, we came in first, and we were advised, you know, I can get to a 32-foot tower, that's typical, and maybe not the 27. So prospectively, because of the low eaves on the tilted roofs, and we kind of done it some others, so the 25-foot elevation, I think that's a nice perspective. I think you'll enjoy that, and we scaled the signs down to make it within your compliance of your community. And I don't know what else they'll say, but it's going to comply with ADA, it's going to be accessible, it's going to be, you know, great to have this, my client, and back in your community, and they've owned it, but they're happy to open it back up. Any questions? Anyone?
I have, oh, let's see. I see over on the wall over there is a so-called materials board over there that we ask for every application, so that satisfies one question. But I'll start over here to my left and ask Ms. Bandell if she has any questions for this gentleman.
Is that your standard sign that you do on your stores?
Their logo, the Lazy Boy, is very specific for their, the characters, the font, I guess I'll say, and their perspective relationship. So what we have to do, and what we had to do on the side elevation, which is really the best one coming over the hill over Tamalpais, would be great to have a big sign on that west elevation, but we scaled it down. That one, we had to make it very simple to meet within your 150 square foot maximum, so we're not happy with that, but we complied. But we'd love that to be bigger, if you'd let me do it, and you could say it's okay. I'd love it.
And I'm wondering about the tagline underneath. Is that typical of your-
Home furnishings and decor? Oh, yes. In fact, we also have been waived a little bit of our common signage on the other windows on the west face. We would normally have a couple other little increments, because many people know, well, you might know, but most people maybe sometimes don't think, they think Lazy Boy is recliners. Their furniture line and accessories, and that is a whole big brand, so we try to sometimes, or they recommend, I'm just, I mean, again, I say I'm an advocate as a builder, designer, but with them, but there's a lot more in a Lazy Boy store these days, and that's why they call them furniture galleries. It's got everything. So we do like to try to even put things that indicate other settings, but yes.
So that's part of your trademark?
It's minimized now, right now. Just what you see is, we've scaled it down to fit your community's requirements.
And the lighting on the, let's see, I guess it's the eastern, the San Clemente side, going down San Clemente Drive, parallel to Paradise Drive, the San Clemente Drive, is there lighting at night along that stretch of building?
At the most, there are downlights, and we use some sconces at the front entries. There are up-down lights to highlight signage of their building illumination, but only if it's related to the path of travel for ADA to meet their exiting-
Because that's a dark corner when you come down the street there.
We have a lot of communities that don't like what they call light pollution going too far out, so it is limited, so we respect that.
That's it?
I want to ask, because I don't see it, and I, maybe I didn't pay attention, the Lazy Boy sign is facelit. Is that correct?
Other one on the, on the main body of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, the letters actually, they're kind of cool. They go from what you see right there in daytime, they look black, in nighttime, they illuminate to white, and so it's not glaring, and there's not a downlight shining on it. They are, they are backlit.
Okay, so we call them push-through lighting or something like that. So that's what's happening with these. They're going to illuminate like other signs in town do at night.
You'll see it.
Okay.
But there's no- No glare coming away from those.
Okay, so we typically ask that the signs fall within discretionary assessment over time, and I'll look to staff for that, whether it's too bright or not, you know, on the signage, once it's up. But I'll take it back-
It's way less than your Macy's and your other stores across the street, I can tell you that, but it's, it is reasonable, and it's not-
I'll go to Mr. Lee here and see if he has any questions for you.
I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. The roof says it's gray, but then the scandia looks blue. Is it gonna, is it like a baby bluish, or is it really a gray?
We're going to paint it. We'll make it, we'll try to do something to what it says, what it-
Right, well, it says gray, but-
Now it's really faded out and bad, but-
Yeah, I mean, and you're, you've done a few of these. It's part of the branding, and you, it's like, in your opinion, is it a gray or a blue when it's actually executed?
It would be a-
It does, it-
Not bright blue, it's just a grayish blue.
Yeah, like a grayish blue, but it's a-
Yeah, subtle, because it's, our new stores have no sloped metal roofing visible. It's paraplaned.
Right. No, I appreciate you.
Charles, where did you see it said gray?
So it says standing seam, metal roof, gray.
Yeah, but the blue is going to be the-
Blue is the highlight feature at the entry, I think.
Yeah, here.
So we don't have a sample of what that gray, only, so that blue is that? Okay, so-
It's not, yeah.
Yeah.
It's existing metal roof.
I'm sorry.
No change.
No, because it's beige right now.
The roof is beige?
Yeah, if you look at the images. Do you have an existing image of the roof? I think it's beige.
Home Consignment.
You can see it in there.
Yes, your page of your elevation, yeah, it's kind of a taupey beige. Yeah, you're right, yeah.
So I just-
Okay, well, good point. So-
If you want to, I'm going to tell you, it has no play into the color scheme of the Lazy Boy. The entry tower is the big deal, so I would even take your advice and take it back to corporate if you said, "Keep it beige."
It's just something to consider. I'm just asking questions to help get clarity, and then we can discuss-
The reason that we are after it is that we have to have good representation of the colors that you are actually going to use.
Okay.
It has to be accurate, it has to be in the planning department's file.
Okay.
And such that when the time comes, if somebody says, "That's not the color that they showed," that there's a file that says it is the color you showed. So we are always concerned about that.
Okay. And then also for the color, so we take that, you're taking the trellis down off the front, but you're keeping the ones on the side, and then in the elevations, it shows them changing to a darker brown? Is that correct? Right? Like, they're actually not going to remain the same color? They go from a light, like taupey, to a dark brown? I'm, just understand the-
Correct.
Sure.
Okay.
Good question.
All right. And that's this caviar, is it? Is it labeled? P5. Yeah, the caviar, so it's almost like a dark brown or black.
It's picking up that front dark color, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then the only other thing I said, is the home furnishing and decor like an actual tagline of the branding, or is that just what, okay? Because I actually like that you called it a furnishing gallery better, but like, that's just my personal two cents.
Corporate.
I can't change that, please. Don't ask me.
Somebody else has to say.
And we will be glad to stick with the blue-gray color on the receipt.
Fair enough. I just wanted to clarify, I wanted you to answer it, because I couldn't see it.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
Looks beautiful.
When Home Consignment was there, I think they usually kept a dumpster in one of the parking spots next to the car dealership. Understand, the trash cans are going to be behind the building in this situation?
Yes. There is an enclosure where they belonged, and we'll keep the neighbors from parking in our parking lot, too.
Okay. The, one other question then, is just in regard to deliveries. There's no loading dock there, so deliveries will come early in the morning, late at night?
No, you know what's really nice now is that they really are showrooms.
Oh.
So the warehouse is in San Jose, and this really, a little bit of deliveries will come through the front door to stock the floor, and you don't, maybe we don't have a floor plan on your submittal, but it's a very small area where they just do the unpacking and put them out, but there's no stocking, there's no warehousing, it's just strictly showroom. They place their orders, they get shipped from San Jose to the home or owners.
Great.
So there's not, no trucks going in and out hardly at all.
All right. Ms. Metcalfe?
Yes, I'm also concerned about the lighting, but somewhat in the opposite direction from you, Margaret. I have to drive by there each night, and I want to be sure there are going to be no interior lights on shining out.
Shining out?
Shining out of the building, you know, like the windows are not going to be lit.
After store hours.
So after store hours.
Well, there's, and no, not like glaring out, but there is a safety and security and, you know, to have some night lighting that does in fact allow police officers to see people walking around, but so it will be illuminated inside, but very low level. But yes, you're right, no-
Because when I head off Tamalpais and turn to San Clemente, I don't want to be blinded. And it, and it's happened at times when they let, whatever it was, the consignment store would have lights on and stuff, very bright.
Well, what you're going to like in this, the next level of helping you, the lighting levels, we're going to open up the ceilings. The new criteria is that where they have right now a suspended ceiling and then track lights, and those would be those glaring lights you'd be seeing. Our new design, we're actually, will remove the T-bar and will go higher up, 14 feet, and there will be track lights, but they'll be shooting from so high, they won't be glaring out the window, so you'll, you'll like it. But they won't be on at night, those track lights.
When you say track lights, are they targeted, so it's going to hit each furniture?
Yes, for those, and then there will be some security lighting, but I think you'll be happy at all with that.
Now, I'm not asking for it all to be dark. It's the idea of the glaring light as you make that turn.
Yes, that's the light pollution that we're very conscious of, that even with our exterior, we're not doing floodlights shooting out, out there. That's very important.
So the, are you, are you through there, Phil?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. The issue that I find sensitivity to is that you don't have any television screens or anything displaying advertising through the window of the store.
Yes.
It's not on the plans, you can't add it later.
No.
Not going to happen.
It doesn't happen, no. It's not part of their criteria.
Peter, I just thought of another question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just curious as to why you kept the trellises, I guess it's on the back. Margaret has the plan down there. Yeah. The, if I may see them.
On the side.
Yeah. You got rid of the trellis in the front where you had the elevator opening.
I know, I know.
But you did keep the two trellises. And I'm just wondering the purpose.
I'll let Martha answer that question.
Martha, answer that question.
So the specific plan encourages the use of trellises, so in keeping with the goals and intent of the specific plan, staff had requested that the trellises remain on that elevation.
You're the culprit.
If you'll let me take it off, we'll take them right off.
The plan is submitted. All right.
Yeah, and we're very, we're very community-based, make you happy, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We will now open the meeting to public comment on this hearing issue. If there's someone here that wants to step up and say something about this application, you have three minutes to do so. Ms. Lucinda Smith, well, it looks like she's going to do so.
I shouldn't come to these meetings. I never can keep my mouth quiet. I wanted to ask staff, and I don't know exactly who to ask, but I think the Highway Patrol Building, when it was remodeled, it got painted blue, and it was rejected and had to be redone. And I'm now wondering why we're looking at blue, which I personally like, as being an acceptable color. Are they going to have to go in and redo it? That doesn't make sense. And then I'd also like to ask the height. In Quarter Madera, we're trying to keep things, I think, lower and not look like San Francisco. And I was wondering why the height, what the magic about adding height to what is already a building access and look as it is.
You can address the question up to staff or us, so, okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. All right.
Sorry, I'm looking at him, but yes, I am addressing it to you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a question, a comment? Okay, then we'll close the public comment section, I believe, and Martha, would you please respond to the height issue of this building if you choose to or wish to or can?
So the C4 zoning district allows a maximum height of 35 feet, and the original proposal that was submitted had a height of 30 feet, and as part of the review process, staff recommended that the height be reduced so that it fits in more with the area. So the applicant came back with a reduced proposal of 25 feet, which staff felt was appropriate. And the purpose of the height on that, that primary entrance is to kind of emphasize the entrance and to give it kind of-
The current trellis, what's the height?
It is 19 feet, so it's an increase of six feet of height.
Okay, so that's a, anybody else have any further questions for staff before we talk about it?
I would like to clarify something for Lucinda, if I may.
We don't address-
Having to do with the color.
Maybe, okay.
The high, since I worked for the Senator, got the complaint at the time, when the Highway Patrol redid the building, they painted it the Highway Patrol colors, and it is a bright, obnoxious blue, and that was what the big fuss was about, not so much the blue, the shade of blue that was used, and as I say, the state office got involved to get it changed.
Well, that's great information, we don't have that blue here today, so...
Well, some people don't think we don't allow blue on buildings.
It's not the same blue at all.
No.
This is a, what's it called, Scandia or something, right? It's not Highway Patrol blue.
It's also not a whole building.
All right, so, I'm gonna start over here on my left with Margaret, and see if she has either some comments on the necessary findings, or something else to contribute.
I remember when we did the dog food over at the town center, the tagline was a problem.
We did allow the tagline, but we decided that...
It was lower.
Yeah, right.
It wasn't part of the signage, is that a different situation?
Kind of a different situation, because we were looking at sort of a conformity across the three fronts, and thought that that would add clutter.
Yeah.
And, so, you know...
Okay. No, I think if the landscaping is kept up, it'll be a big improvement to that area, and I think the second access into the building is a good thing.
Right. Okay, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I can make all the findings, and I see it as a refresh and an improvement to, you know, continuing our retail success in the town, so I...
Okay.
And then, as far as the signage, the Home Consignment one very much has a very similar multiple type, like, written out, so I think it's like the existing condition almost, and yeah, just look forward to it, and...
Okay. Yeah, good, Dr. Bundy?
I can make all the findings, I support it.
Mrs. Metcalfe?
I can make the findings, I support it, I would prefer not to see the trellises, but it's out of my hands and yours.
Well, I think that, for my part, I think staff did a good job in guiding the applicant to certain result, so, you know...
No, it looks very good, it's just, to me, the trellises don't fit the look of the building.
So, I also can make the findings for this, and I would look for a motion from anybody to initiate this.
I'll make a motion in regards to Lazy Boy Furniture Store, public hearing for design review and sign permit application for modifications to the existing commercial building, sign improvements and associated signs at 801 Tamalpais Drive, PL-2019-0036 and PL-2020-0009.
Second?
Okay, then.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye. It's a deal. Continue the demo. Okay, thank you very much.
We're gonna read the appeal rights.
Yes, of course.
Following action by the Planning Commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the Town Council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the Planning Department, and a filing fee of $300 is required.
All right, this is sufficiently rapid, so I think we'll just go right into our second item, accessory dwelling unit ordinance. This is a public hearing to consider proposed zoning ordinance amendments to Chapter 18.18, Special Purpose Overlay District, and Chapter 18.31, accessory dwelling units. There's a long history here. Martha will make it clear as a bell.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners, switching gears. This is an item that has been before you several times this year. In May and August, there was a study session to consider possible amendments to Chapter 1831, the accessory dwelling unit chapter, and on October 22nd, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending that the Town Council repeal and replace Chapter 1831 and make amendments to Chapter 1804, definitions, Chapter 1818, Special Purpose Overlay District, and Chapter 1820, Off-Street Parking. The Town Council subsequently conducted a public hearing and introduced ordinance number 992 on December 3rd, 2019, to repeal and replace Chapter 1831 and to amend Chapters 1804, 1818, and 1820. And on January 21st, the Town Council adopted the ordinance. Based on direction provided by the Town Council at the January 21st meeting, the Planning Commission will consider further amendments to Chapter 1818 and 1831 to limit ADUs and JADUs within existing structures, within portions of Christmas Tree Hill that are subject to the capacity limitations. At the time that the Christmas Tree Hill Overlay District was adopted, there were 250 dwelling units, and a total of 25 ADUs were allowed. The Town's ADU ordinance that was adopted in 2016, and most recently on January 21st, exempts ADUs within existing spaces and JADUs from these capacity limits. Since 2016, public safety concerns about fire risks and evacuation challenges within portion of Christmas Tree Hill have intensified because of recent wildfires in Northern California. In light of these concerns, at the January 21st Town Council meeting, the Town Council directed staff to bring back for council's consideration an amendment to the recently adopted ordinance. In addition, the Planning Commission will also be considering other non-substantive cleanup changes and clarifications, and these changes do not change the meaning or intent of the ordinance that was adopted on January 21st. The Town has received several comment letters, the comments that have been received are included in your packet as Attachment 5, and the public comments address fire safety concerns in Christmas Tree Hill, concerns with limiting ADUs within Christmas Tree Hill, concerns about the window development standard in its current form, and a request for additional discretionary review. And that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you have.
That was too easy, so, Phyllis, I'm gonna see if you have any questions for Martha out of the gate here.
Not at this point.
Okay, Bob?
No.
Okay, Mr. Lee?
No.
Margaret?
Not right out of the gate.
Okay. In terms of clarity here, I would like to ask a couple of questions for my edification here. So, on, in the resolution, on page 21, you have a chart of the districts, 11 of them on Christmas Tree Hill, and the percentage of the total of dwelling units that are ADUs now, is that correct?
So, the percentage is the percentage of the 25 ADUs that are allowed. So, for example, capacity District 4 is allowed 8% of the overall ADU capacity, so that amounts to two accessory dwelling units. So, out of the 11 existing capacity districts, eight of those districts are at full capacity in relation to the number of ADUs that are allowed based on these capacity limitations.
All right, so then, you're a better mathematician than I, so how many would that leave available for Christmas Tree Hill at this point?
I would say four to six, round numbers.
Okay, and this is reflective of the 2016 allotment, is that right?
Correct, so since 2016, staff has not been including interior ADUs and JADUs in these capacity limitations?
Right, and just to clarify, we haven't had any JADU applications, I don't know if we have an exact count on how many interior ADUs have been built in Christmas Tree Hill since 2017. But, yeah, approximately four, I would say. And I think just in total, just how the capacity limitations end up allowing a total of approximately 25 ADUs in the entire Christmas Tree Hill Overlay District. So, with, and I think with Martha's estimate, that about four to six ADUs remain in certain zones, or certain, yeah, certain zones. You know offhand the particular zone that, if not, I don't...
Okay. A simple question, are there any lots over 20,000 square feet on the hill?
Are there any lots over 20,000 square feet? There probably, there may be a couple, not, clearly not many, but a small minority there may be, I don't have that actual number.
Only because it's in 1818410, that it says, anything over 20,000 will not be
Correct.
governed by the limitations, so... This is primarily then in response to the four concerns that you highlighted in the report, and that currently on Christmas Tree Hill, the parking is defined as limited to those areas that are marked as parking spots.
Correct.
And the Town has some kind of enforcement mechanism up there for that purpose, to confine, do that?
The tickets.
Tickets, okay.
Code enforcement officer.
Yeah.
Police officer.
And they, they take a motorcycle up the hill, so, they, what is the ticket for parking up there outside of it, and how often, do you have any idea that that's enforced?
$50.
I heard that somebody say $50, so, we'll take that as it is.
I don't know offhand, no.
And what are our options here with this? Can we modify it, not do anything? What are our options for everybody's awareness?
So, it's up to the Planning Commission what action you would like to take this evening. There's a resolution before you, however, you could choose not to approve that resolution, and you could direct staff to return with an alternative resolution, if you wanted to make modifications, or to not approve the change to limit ADUs, the interior ADUs and the JADUs. So, it's up to the Commission how you would like to proceed, and...
And I think, just to be mindful, this is a recommendation that the Planning Commission is making to the Town Council, but if there was significant changes you would like to see to the resolution that's been prepared, we would request that you would just provide direction on what sort of changes you would like to see, and then we could come back and draft a resolution that includes the Commission's comments and recommendations in that regard.
Okay. Has anybody discussed reducing the amount of parking that's up there, or trying to create more space on the roads up there at all? Does that come up in any shape or form?
It's, oh, it's funny you ask, no, we just actually had a conversations with, in relation to the Climate Adaptation Plan, as we were talking about ways to enhance resiliency up on the hill and whatnot, and those sorts of mitigation measures or enhancements to the road network were discussed, I mean, but nothing is actively being pursued in terms of specific policies or funding at this point in time for such measures, but clearly, it's sort of on the minds of our Public Works Department and other Fire Department and others in the town and beyond who are thinking about these things.
Right, okay, so, and I just asked that because there's clearly a concern about the existing conditions up there, so, you know, if there's any move afoot to try and pull back from what exists up there, number one, you know, that's not embodied in this at all, or I haven't heard that, you know, other than it feels dangerous now, and any further residents up there, yeah.
Right, and, you know, staff is really bringing to you, sort of, based on the direction we heard, we haven't done our own sort of analysis beyond that in terms of what other things might be appropriate to address the concerns that have been raised, but there very well may be other things that should be considered as part of addressing issues and concerns that have been raised related to vehicles and population up in Christmas Tree Hill specifically, or other areas of town. So, it's, in that regard, yes, this is limited to just the specific issues that were discussed related to the ordinance 992 that came before the Town Council, and how to sort of proceed with respect to this ordinance.
Okay, so hypothetically, when somebody puts in a JADU or an ADU, they have no option to let somebody park up there, because somehow the parking spots are all spoken for in some way, shape, or form, or is it first come, first served up there?
The parking spaces on the street are first come, first served.
Okay, so that means that whoever gets there gets that spot, and somebody else has to go drive back down the hill and park at the bottom. So, hypothetically, the carload can't increase up there. And, right, so...
There's a finite number of parking spaces, it also obviously depends on how people actually park within those white boxes, and what size vehicles they use to park in there, and so on, but it is limited by the physical delineations, or delineations, yeah, of the delineation, sorry, of those painted white squares, for on-street parking, obviously.
So, you know, in a fashion that any residence within a certain distance of public transport doesn't have to provide parking, that's written up in ordinances and so forth, is there any way that, is it even possible to say, well, on Christmas Tree Hill, if you're gonna have an ADU or a JADU, your tenant cannot have a car? Right, you know? I'm just asking, you know, is that in the realm of possibility?
So, that would be something between the landlord and the tenant, if they are within a half-mile of transit, they're not required to provide an additional parking space on the property for an ADU parking space?
Yeah, and I think you, I think I understand the point you're trying to make, but in terms of theoretically, another policy that could be discussed or considered in terms of just limiting vehicles per household, limiting vehicles per ADU, you know, I don't think, it's not something that we've considered, it would be unusual, I would think. Not saying that it couldn't possibly be done, but I think the other alternative is that it's just limited, I think, one effective way, if it's enforced, is that there is a finite, there is a capacity for vehicle parking as well up on the hill that exists today, and couldn't readily be exceeded without running, you know, doing so illegally, at least for on-street parking.
Okay, well, before we open it up to public comment, I'll ask if the other Commissioners have any questions for staff after my little interrogatory. Phyllis?
I had some questions regarding the windows, and I noticed there are two letters in the file about windows. One has to do with the requirement of the clear story windows, which I remember even questioning myself at the time, we first had this come before us. And I'll tell you each of them, and then you could answer them both. And the second one had to do with the, how did you find it tonight? Page 66, having to do with the standards other than the clear story windows, and the original wording that I guess we had sent forward, having to do with some, I hate the term wiggle, wiggle room, if there's an agreement between the next-door neighbors and stuff. And on that one, why was it changed? Can it be changed back? And on the clear story windows, is there any way we can work with that to have some movement on it?
So, the version of the ordinance that the Commission considered on October 22nd had several different options for, in it, to allow for discretionary review, there is one for height, size, and then for this window standard. So, the window standard, as it's written in the ordinance that was adopted, requires a... a clear story window on either side or rear elevation if it's within 15 feet of a property line. And the original, the prior ordinance on October 22nd allowed for that standard to be waived with approval from the adjacent property owner or with approval of a design review application. And at the October meeting, the commission elected to remove those discretionary review options from the ordinance. And then when it went to council on December, the first, when it was adopted, the council added back in the allowance for the size to exceed the minimum standard with approval of design review by the planning commission. So the commission could make a recommendation that that standard, the window standard, be revised to add back in the allowance for design review or approval from the adjacent property.
All right. So this letter that's dated January 15th on page 66 was before the council changed? Because this is not how this is, this person has written the letter, that's what has me confused. It's asking us to go back to what we considered, which included the provision that it's, he, it's, is talking about removing that discretion. So what is exactly in place at this time?
So in place in this time?
I just, you're looking at page 66?
Yes.
Okay.
So currently, there is not an allowance for the standard to be waived if the adjacent property owner gives permission or if the planning commission approves a design review. So the ordinance 992, which was just adopted, requires clear story windows if it's within 15 feet. So the author of this letter is requesting that that design review option be put back into the ordinance.
And it's talking about other than clear story windows? If you read the party, he has in quotes.
So he's requesting that a normal window be used instead of clear story if you obtain approval from the neighbor or if a design review application is approved.
But that is not in the ordinance at this time?
Correct.
But it was in the ordinance when we sent it forward to the council?
It was in the ordinance that was considered on October 22nd. However, as part of those deliberations, the commission made a recommendation to remove all the discretionary review from the ordinance. So the ordinance that went to the council and was adopted did not include that allowance.
I would like to suggest, as we discuss this, that we consider putting that discretion back in as far as this one goes on.
Okay.
Page 66. Now, the other one, which is, starts on page 57. And Peter, you could probably discuss this one better than I can with the construction, is talking about ceiling heights usually being eight feet. And that the clear story window is to start at six, five or six-six, I forget which. And it doesn't leave, it's not, what are they? It doesn't leave out for a window. It's kind of, I was trying to see, like where, when you have guns sticking out of a castle, except this is horizontal instead of vertical. And I'm wondering, you know, what comment you have to make about that?
If there's a question, do you want us to have a specific question for this particular?
Well, my question is, if this person is correct, that this is what will happen with, I mean, we try to keep the height down on these ADUs. So we don't want cathedral ceilings and other things. So if this man is talking about the standard eight-foot ceiling, is there, you know, is he correct?
We don't have a whiteboard here. We don't have a whiteboard here, otherwise I would, you know, draw it out, but
Look at the next page.
But his statement is, his whole paragraph is predicated on the fact that ceiling limits would be eight foot, and that's not necessarily the case. So a clear story window can go into a place where a ceiling is higher. But he's just saying that if I have an eight-foot high ceiling, he's right. But, you know, the idea of the clear story window was that you have a ceiling that's taller than eight foot, so it's up high. Right?
Okay.
And that's what he's going on about.
So in other words, his project proposed for Ten Enterprise Drive should have a higher ceiling? And that would settle his problem?
And he is somewhat limited in ceiling height in this instance because it's an ADU above a garage, so the maximum height that's allowed is 25 feet. But there could be design solutions.
Well, once again, in cases where there is a difficulty, a height difficulty, if the ceiling could only be eight foot because it's built above a garage and the total height limit, et cetera, can there be some discretion on whether or not it should be a clear story window in specific cases, not just leave it open for any reason, but if there are problems, is that a possibility, especially if it's over a garage, it may not even be facing any other building? Yeah, I don't know, we don't see the plans. But is there a way that?
Mr. Wolf, you can respond to the discretionary review items.
Right. No, I think that was what, if you had a discretionary process which allowed for non-clear story windows through the design review process, you would have exactly that ability to have a non-clear story window.
Okay. So the idea is that process is instead of the clear story window, rather than just covering windows that are not clear story to begin with? Yeah. There are other things, there are other things
Correct.
very late to have. And I am saying, could
It would be
that be included in that discretion? An issue such as this, the eight-foot ceiling and the clear story window, and could it be included in that discretionary look that staff takes?
It's not, yes, and once you're into discretionary review, it would, you know, and again, this did not go forward into the ordinance, so we haven't fully, like, vetted exactly how this would play out. But the idea would be you would specify in an application that you are applying for design review specifically to allow a non-clear story window facing an elevation or adjacent property where otherwise you would be required to have a clear story window. And findings would have to be made specifically for that clear story window, I'm sorry, for that non-clear story window that would relate to, probably the most important thing would be privacy, make that finding related to privacy. We haven't specified or haven't gone through the practice of how you would make the other findings or if you would need to make the other findings, but clearly that particular regulation was put in place to address privacy issues. So the focus of that designer review conversation or discretion would be likely surrounding privacy first, you know, in, for the most part, I mean.
And that would be staff review would have to come to the commission?
It could be, but then, of course, appeals could, you know, you have, yes.
Yeah, but generally, the staff can review to make a decision.
Likely, likely we would be, if we wanted to go forward that, we would be recommending that we would start with a staff review or something like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Bundy? Yeah, in relationship to that, in this particular case, it was to try to have the bedroom oriented one particular way and the need to have an exit through a window from that bedroom. And so I would agree with Phyllis that having discretionary review, even if it was a window that had non-transparent glazing at the bottom of it, but still would allow egress from the building.
Okay. I want to move on to questions. So, Mr. Lee, do you have any questions for staff?
So, just, I'm gonna ask big questions and it's just for, so, and if I understand it right, the retooling of the wording that the council has approved for this new ordinance, was there ever a restriction on the JDUs or, and like? No, they haven't approved it, but they've sent it back to us and said, you know, so, but in the previous Christmas Tree Hill overlay district, there is, there's never been any kind of restriction on JDUs?
So in the original overlay district, it allowed for 25 ADUs and it did not differentiate between added floor area or conversion of existing space. And then the state legislation, which went into effect in 2017, essentially allowed for the conversion of interior spaces and JADUs through building permit process, through ministerial building permit process. So since 2017, the only ADUs that have been included in the capacity limitations are ADU that adds square footage, so either an attached ADU or a detached structure.
Okay. And adding the JADU to this ordinance, in my reading of how you put it, it won't conflict with current state legislation?
So, to be determined.
To be determined. So we could either not do it and not play that game of risk, or we could move it forward, recommending that we would like to see if that has implications to the state law.
So one aspect of the new state law that took effect on January 1st is there is a new procedure that all ADU ordinances or amendments to ADU ordinance now go to HCD for a review process. And so in fact, ordinance number 992, which was adopted by the council at the end of January, has been sent off to HCD. And HCD will review that. And if HCD determines that any aspect of that ordinance doesn't comply with state law, there is a process that the HCD lets the town know. The town essentially engages what is sort of a meet and confer process back and forth, and then the council would then decide if HCD still believes that any aspect of the ordinance does not comply with state law, the council would need to either decide to amend the ordinance or decide not to amend the ordinance. And that process needs to happen before HCD would engage in any referral for enforcement actions.
So currently, we're being asked to make a recommendation at risk because we haven't had the reply of its current state that's been sent to HCD.
So essentially, council has decided to put this on two tracks, that in order to make sure that the objective standards that were added in ordinance 992 take effect more quickly, council didn't want to slow up the entire 992 by having an amendment considered to the first ordinance. So 992 is finished, it's done, it repealed and replaced what's currently in the code. That ordinance will take effect on the 31st day after it was adopted. And it will be reviewed and is under review by HCD if HCD finds that any aspect of that ordinance does not comply with state law, there will be this back and forth process that I just explained and an opportunity to change. So in the meantime, council wants to make an amendment to what it just essentially adopted. And that is what you're looking at here. So the planning commission is looking at whether or not to recommend an amendment which would change the, broaden the types of ADUs and JADUs that are subject to the existing capacity limitations on Christmas Tree Hill. If that amendment is made by council, that too would be sent off and packaged up for HCD. So HCD may end up going through two separate processes, potentially more.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry, that's a very complex, you know, process, and I just, it was very concise how you explained it to me, so I appreciate that. So then, my question is, under the state, with JADUs, right, we don't review them, I'm not as familiar with them, so I'm gonna ask some broad questions. When you do the interior changes to program, can it be unoccupied space already? So ultimately, occupancy is, you know, there's this much square footage, you could put five people in there, whether it was a JADU or not, right? But like, is there really any change to the amount of people that will go up to Christmas Tree Hill if they convert this thing to being able to rent to two people or not? And are we only really talking about cars? Or, you know, like, what, I just, I didn't, I just?
There's no, yeah, we don't have answers to those questions. I think there's, you know, we don't know.
Okay.
So, but I think
But can you convert a garage? Like, ultimately, you can't occupy
You could, yes.
But you can. So therefore, you could add more livable space in an interior that ultimately had not yet been approved for living?
Correct.
Okay.
And there is a distinction between an interior ADU and a JADU. Per the definition in state law, a JADU is the conversion of an existing bedroom. So that would not be converted from non-living space.
You're not actually adding new population to, so
It may not, it depends if the bedroom's used or not.
You could have a guest room in your home and decide to convert to JDU and rent it.
Yeah, but so the intent of our proceeding is to try to reduce population, but what I'm saying is by not allowing people to do what they want within their properties, you are not actually legally able to control whether they can add more people or not, either way. So, you know, I, I'm being asked to see if I, is a real good recommendation to basically over-regulate or not? And so in this instance, I might not see that the regulation is necessary. So that's how I'm evaluating it in questions.
Next question, yeah.
All right. So, yeah, that's it, thanks.
Margaret?
I think, I mean, maybe I'm not understanding it, but if the purpose of looking at Christmas Tree Hill as a separate district or entity is to make it safer and think about the parking and the traffic issues that are there and the health and safety of the neighborhood that's there already, I really don't understand how broadening what's already there and is already a problem, why are we looking at that? If the purpose of it is to make it safer and to eliminate the difficulties that people there have in housing, in parking, if those are the two main concerns of the Christmas Tree Hill overlay, it's irresponsible of us to say we should allow more.
Are you trying to ask why we're looking at this or what is your question?
Yeah, yeah.
So
The purpose of the whole issue is at odds to me.
We've got to get some people to speak to us, but if you're asking, what is the point of this? Adam?
Well, I'll just try to, maybe just to clarify, that the ordinance amendment in front of you would actually further restrict
Oh, all right.
the number of accessory dwelling units
Because I was looking at what Peter looked at.
Could be constructed in Christmas Tree Hill. So is that helpful?
Okay, then I guess I'm not really understanding the language of 18.18410.
Which page are you on, please?
I'm on page 21. It was what Peter had referred to.
I was, so
Yeah, 21.
So, yes, the only thing that has struck out is paragraph C of 1818410, which actually says that interior accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units as defined in chapter 1831 shall not be included in calculating the maximum allowable number of accessory dwelling units per capacity district. So that means that they will be counted with this amendment, right?
Shall not be included in calculating the maximum allowable number of access.
Right, and that's struck out in this amendment.
So how about the one before it, B?
That's existing. And we're, the only language that would be added would be and junior accessory
It says shall not be included in calculating the maximum.
But that's 20,000 square feet. So I'm gonna, if I may interject, section C says the allowed maximum number totals shall include existing and future, except those excluded above. So that's where the limiting comes in. It's saying right there, the allowed maximum shall include existing and future, so they're actually putting a cap on it right there. Let's let that gestate for a little bit. And I'm going to ask that these very patient members of the public be willing to members of the public be willing to impart their comments to us.
I think I'm patient!
So, okay, we'll start with the three-minute rule here, and identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is David Kuhnhardt, and I live at 141 Hill Path on Christmas Tree Hill, have four 23 and a half years. I want to make clear that I am here to express the views of myself and my wife as private citizens, expressing our opinion, just like some of our good neighbors. As a member of the town council, I have been advised by our excellent council for this town to recuse myself because of the potential appearance of conflict, because I'm in a house that is on that hill that is the subject of this. But I want you to know that I have consulted with town council, who has agreed that I should be having the same First Amendment right to come and speak in a public setting, only in a public setting, to you about this topic. But I disagree with the three members of our town council who were allowed to vote on this, and disagree with the notion that all ADUs and JDU's should be shut down on Christmas Tree Hill. First of all, I noticed a letter from a friend and neighbor that's in here, Michael Harlock, with which I just would like to point that out to you to make sure that you read. Something in answer to questions from the chair, since 1994, we moved in in 1996, so the overlay district predates us by two years, there have been several changes on the hill which changed the findings about the nature of Christmas Tree Hill. Every single renovation or improvement or new property on the hill, including ours, has been required to have off-street parking. The town required that we have four off-street parking spaces on our 10,000-square-foot lot with a 3,000-square-foot house when we were making renovations to stabilize our foundation and add a bedroom or two. Now, there have, so there have been about two dozen additional off-street parking spaces added on the hill. There have been some widenings of streets added, and this year, there's been a tremendous amount of removal of wildfire fuel up on the hill. All good stuff. Now, I want to make sure that I am not suggesting that my words should have an ounce more or less weight than any other private citizen, because I'm just here as a private citizen. Now, that's clear. We do want to make a distinction between additional, separate accessory dwelling units and interior JDU's. A JDU adds no additional square footage to a property. It speaks somewhat to Commissioner Lee's questions. A JDU merely repurposes an already improved portion of an existing property, sometimes with an additional exterior door, or not, sometimes with some form of partial kitchen, or not, such that an unused portion of an existing home can be used by a separate individual or family without any addition of water or sewer capacity. I beg you to allow me to complete this thought, because this is the only time that I will have the chance to exhibit my First Amendment right.
Being that we have a very crowded room tonight...
I beg you to...
I will give you a minute, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Lucinda, thank you, Lucinda. It is, it's most often the case that JDU's, interior JDU's, are implemented when the primary property owner has downsized, because their children have moved away, or because a spouse has passed away, or both. Therefore, we submit an ADU, whereas an ADU might add people to an added space in a property, most JDU's or interior ADUs would signal perhaps the return of a person or people to repurpose space, most often without any net increase to the original use of the property. This repurposing may result in bringing in a grandparent, or a separate person, or an adult child, for the household's economic benefit of the property-owning folks who are trying to age in place. It should not be understood as any increase in density or traffic if the existing home remains exactly the same size, has the same off-street parking, has the same excellent egress to, for safety and in the event of a disaster. Thus, it may be reasonable to restrict additional separate ADUs. It should not apply to JDU's interiors, on interior structures like ours that have no net additional square footage, no additional water-swear capacity, and have adequate off-streets parking already. I urge you to make this distinction and to ignore the view of the three members of our town council.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, please, I'll give you equal time there. If I can get this to do what I want it to do.
Thank you. Louise Brown, 9 Summit Drive, Christmas Tree Hill, and David is a friend and neighbor, and I want to disagree with him. He said that this is about shutting down all ADUs on Christmas Tree Hill, that's not the case. This is about re-establishing wise limits to the number of ADUs on Christmas Tree Hill. Christmas Tree Hill represents just 6.7% of total households in Corder Madera. It's not saying no ADUs, it's saying that there is a limit to what the hill can provide for safely. I want to thank the town, the town council, the staff, in particular, the attorney and the manager, for all of the work and thoughtfulness on this issue so far. I've written extensively and spoken extensively, there are three letters in your packet from me and my husband Brian about this issue. I'm gonna just try to really quickly reiterate some of my key points, just to be sure that I'm heard. The concerns about adding density to areas like Christmas Tree Hill, where unique conditions, including steep, narrow, and impassable roads, vegetative fuel load, abutment to open space, small lots with wooden structures, a single point of egress and access, all make for hazardous conditions in the event of wildfire or other emergencies where evacuation is required. The high winds of just two days ago were a great reminder of these kinds of dangers and conditions. A tree fell on above-ground wires sparking a fire high on the hill. Fire trucks responding uphill forced all downhill traffic to be stopped. If there had been a raging fire, this uphill-downhill face-off would have been deadly. The previously established special overlay district for Christmas Tree Hill wisely limited the total number of allowable ADUs to limit density in an area that can ill afford more people and cars on a day-to-day basis, never mind in an emergency requiring speedy and safe evacuation. We appreciate all of the town staff's work to come back to the commission with amended language to ordinance 992 to reinstate conditions originally established in the special overlay district. Again, this doesn't mean no ADUs, it means limiting the ADUs. And in addition to our strong urging to forward these amendments to the town council for their review and approval, I would recommend the creation of a working committee to help identify and galvanize other communities in California where similar conditions exist, wildland-urban interface living. That is a condition, not only here in Marin, but up and down California, where the conditions are such that emergencies and safe evacuation are of paramount importance. And those other communities should partner with Corder Madera to go back to the state to re-establish some local control where it's necessary to help ensure public safety. And I'd also like to know, but this might be a question for either the town manager or attorney, where efforts stand in undergrounding power lines on Christmas Tree Hill? As I understand, there's been some discussion with PG&E about this. This is not an aesthetic issue, it's a critical public safety issue. The one last thing I'd like to say, just so you can kind of put this in perspective, we live in the very first house on Summit Drive. From our house up, it gets more narrow, more impassable, steep, twisting, winding roads. It is very, very difficult to drive on a clear and sunny day. We have the ability to turn our single home into three units, and I would attest that a JADU is not just adding somebody where another person might have left. If there were a wildfire, and we had three different households living at our property who were trying to safely evacuate at the same time, we would be the cork that would plug up the entire rest of Summit Drive up the hill, and it would endanger lives. I feel so strongly about this, I urge you to really look closely at this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I suspect Lucinda might want to say something, so...
I gave up some of my topics.
Oh, you didn't.
Very briefly, Lucinda Smith, on Alta Way. I don't live on Christmas Tree Hill, but I applaud that there are restrictions because of the danger for the health and welfare of the people up there with regard to the population and the emergency coverage. We have it up on Alta Way, Alta Terrace, and it really is important that we be considered similarly. And I'm concerned that there's been too much already done, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to come to the meeting that, where everything got, I guess, approved. But since we're in the amendment process, if there's anything we can do with regard to Alta Way, Alta Terrace, to get the restrictions to minimize, we already have a situation where we've had an ADU input, it's really a nice one, I have to say, they did a great job. That person parks on the street, person across the street parks in front of her own house, and there makes one lane available, one lane. Same thing Louise was talking about. If we've got fire trucks going up there, nobody's leaving. If we've got people leaving, no fire trucks are going up. That's just one specific case, but it can tie up the entire upper level. And it's, we need to address this as a community. The winds were a good indication that we've got to do something. Please don't just let this go, because it is a dangerous area. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda. Are that all the public speakers we have here tonight, sir? Oh, okay, then we'll close that. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna bring it back up here to express some thoughts and direction. Phyllis?
I'm gonna bring up something I brought up in the past on another building we were approving, the Christmas Tree Hill Dwellers Association Committee, Commission, I'm not sure, let's go. There are certain rules that, you know, there's the rules and regs, and the group meets, and there're supposed to be five or six people, you know, that give their advice, their feelings, they have a form they fill out. And I am wondering how much standing it has, and if there is a, I mean, some of it is obsolete, as we discussed, if it should be dropped, having that commission, or, better yet, look at the rules and regs, make sure they fit into what today's state dictives are, because that's what they become, and if we could have that group, which I assume still exists in some way, you know, adopt their forms they fill out. So, if we looked at, I see somebody shaking their head, no, I mean, I don't, sometimes I'm told it exists, sometimes I'm told it isn't. Michael Harlock says, oh, yes, it is, and, you know, so I don't know.
I think there were some emails in the, Martha, you want to go through that, and then I can maybe add on to it?
Yeah, so this came up in the 155 Summit discussion. So as part of that process, staff had reached out to the Hill Dwellers Association and routed the plans, and through the correspondence with Michael Harlock, essentially learned that the interest in people reviewing plans through the Hill Dwellers Association had waned over recent years, and there was more of a push on, kind of emphasis on neighborhood safety and the NRG. And there were conversations between the Hill Dwellers Association and the NRG about possibly combining, but the emphasis of the NRG is really on safety, and so there was not an interest by that group to kind of take over some of this design review, review that the Hill Dwellers Association previously did. So essentially, the message we heard was that the committee was no longer reviewing design review plans, and the 155 Summit plans were the last set of plans that were routed to that committee to review.
I was talking more of the safety issues that have just been brought up.
Yes, well, so we did refer...
You know, not whether or not it's a pretty front door.
We referred these, this notice for this hearing was referred to the NRG, so they got the notification that this was going to be discussed. It's been passed through the, you know, the channels that we know, know of in Christmas Tree Hill to get the word out and try to, you know, let people know that this is occurring, and that's what you see here today. But the other point I would say is, there's no more weight to the Hill Dwellers Association. When you read through the requirements in the zoning ordinance, I mean, clearly, the overlay district was created through a community plan process that was developed through the community members at that time, who were stewards of that plan. And therefore, the Hill Dwellers Association, I think, formed around that and sort of evolved in conjunction with that plan, and so I think there was this feeling throughout the years that they should have a say on those applications that related, mostly it was related to design review. That said, there's nothing that would require any additional weight to that group than any other citizen who may come and present testimony, but other than the fact that they may speak for an organized group of citizens up on the hill. And that's where that is. So I mean, there, I don't want to give the impression that they should have an outsized proportional influence on the decisions of applications as they come forth, other than those who they represent.
Yeah, I mean, there were things in it that we talked about, obsolete is the word, I mean, it talked about cottages, I mean, they're not cottages, it talked about no flat roofs, well, there're plenty of flat roofs because modern architecture's going in, so whether or not that should be revised or just ignored, I don't know, and how it would fit in with really important considerations for safety due to fire, and whether or not staff looks at it and makes the decision, or whether it's gonna go...
Yeah, the issue is that they, there are plenty, there's, you know, I think, those are all embodied in the zoning ordinance as it exists, in the ADU regulations that are before you tonight, and we're, you know, so those haven't necessarily changed. I think what we're discussing is something that is in front of you tonight, that is very much along the lines of public safety and is up for consideration tonight with several, you know, several residents of Christmas Tree Hill now providing comment to you. So it's, those didn't get amended, or, I mean, design is something, as you mentioned, totally separate and apart, and I think a different conversation for another time related to what to do with design review applications, but this is, this is more about amending with respect to accessory dwelling units, and you're hearing concerns about public safety and whatnot. But, you know, those original reasons for why the limitations are in the ordinance or in the code to begin with have not changed since 1994, and now we're in a position of potentially either, you know, having to change them or not, but you're hearing both sides of that tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I have a factual update to the question just for you.
Well, I'd have to open up the hearing, so I want to, David will take that in advisement. Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, I think David Kuhnhardt makes a good argument for the fact that junior ADUs don't really add to the capacity of the community from the standpoint of the number of residents there. And this is an argument I make with my neighbors in Mariner Cove, that, you know, this extra bedroom was previously occupied by somebody, and we can allow somebody to come in from outside of that family and potentially work in the city, or, you know, have affordable place to live. But we don't really have the safety issues related to fire that are up on Christmas Tree Hill. I attended the Sonoma State Planning Conference where there was a big emphasis on planning and building in the Wui, and this Christmas Tree Hill is something that, you know, wouldn't be allowed, you know, now, just like Mariner Cove wouldn't be allowed because it was built on wetlands, and we can't do that anymore. They actually made the point that potentially you can build safely in the Wui, but the idea is to cluster the development and have a lot of open space and defensible space around you. And so, I think safety is paramount. I think the concern about fire and egress up on Christmas Tree Hill and potentially other areas in Corder Madera is really serious, and I would support what the town council has proposed. And, I mean, it could be... And, I mean, it could be that this is gonna face some type of overturn from the state, but I would propose things as they are written. We may also want to address clear story windows as a separate issue.
Well, they are in here to address. Mr. Lee, your thoughts about this issue?
So as far as egress and what's happening up at Christmas Tree Hill, the town in a separate capacity is looking at that currently in ways to adapt to a new plan. Some of the concerns that the residents have expressed are being discussed, and it will be shared in a public event coming up. As an example of other means of addressing fired risk, I brought up a example that was brought up by Mill Valley, which is areas of refuge, where you could do a fortified space where people could flee to right adjacent to the house in a collective group. That is a strategy that they're mitigating, where you won't be able to address that even in the current capacity of people that are there now. So I hear you about, and I hear the residents about trying to improve safety up there. So I personally would like to detach the discussion a little bit, not all of it. I think ADUs are very specific, and they're trying to create new rental stock for the most part. And so even the interior ADU, because of its very nature and its definition of the state, I would like that included. However, the JDU, I've, you know, rented four rooms in my mother's house previously. And whether it was my mother and my three brothers, or it was students, or whoever, it's our right to do that. And I guess that's why I don't like the ADU for the interior, is you can convert non-bedroom spaces into new livable space, so you can add new. But everything that's been approved up there already should be occupiable. It's not, it's not up to us to understand whether you have two people in your house now, or four. If you have four bedrooms, you have the right, by right, to four. And so I guess, for me, the JDU, what is it? JADUs, to me, are a management process. They're the ability to maybe submeter or control and bill to people that are living in that space more fairly and, you know, legally, instead of opening up your house to maybe, you know, strangers, but still, you know. And so for that, I personally can see that the JADU would not have an adverse effect. And I would like to not include it because it wasn't part of the original discussion when the ADU ordinance was made. That's my personal reflection on it. I don't live up there. This is a property rights, just impartial weighing in, and that's how I feel.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Ms. Bandell.
Mr. Lee just introduced the idea of right into the, and I don't, that's a disturbing sort of issue to me, because I don't think anybody has the right, living on Christmas Tree Hill, to endanger someone else's way of life as far as getting in and getting out.
When I say by right, it means that if you have a bedroom, you have a right for an occupant to sleep in.
Let her finish, please.
But if she's gonna take me out of context, I can defend myself.
I want her to express her thought there. Thank you.
Well, she can express herself, but she can't say what I was saying.
Okay. Let her finish, please. Margaret.
Okay. And moving on, when all my bedrooms were occupied, they were occupied by people who didn't drive, my children. When people rent out rooms, it's usually to an adult. And that adult needs to go to work or come back from work, and has a car, and puts a different kind of stress on a neighborhood than the person originally occupying it, a child. So I disagree with some of the discussion that was going on as to who occupies a JADU. But looking at the bigger picture, and it should be no surprise to anybody here how I feel, that anything that would increase the number of people living and putting a taxing effect on the neighborhood of Christmas Tree Hill would, I think, be a danger. And, and not healthy for the people already living there.
Okay, for the sake of argument, then, if you had bedrooms with your kids in it, or bedrooms with adults, is there a discernible difference? I'm just asking as a devil's advocate here, so.
Yes, the children don't have cars that they have to park up.
They still have to get out. But the thing is, the Christmas Tree Hill has limited the number of cars. You can't bring any more cars up there.
So what are you asking?
I'm asking, what's the difference between your son in a room and the renter in the room if they, neither can bring their car up the hill?
Oh, nothing.
Okay.
I don't think.
And Charles, what did you take objection to that Margaret said?
I already expressed it.
Okay.
I'm sorry that I, I think she was taking, yeah. But now, but I, that was a good question. Ultimately, if they, if the property is entitled to a certain amount of parking, whether you add the JDU or not, you cannot add the park.
You can't add more parking when you approve the JDU. The entitlement to the parking of a specific house or lot, or the neighborhood, won't adjust. And so therefore, it's up to whether they rent the individual room, or the JADU, about whether they have and can allow that tenant to have a car. And so some of the other discussions are electric bikes and other things that they're gonna incentivize up there, perhaps. So, you know, like, there's, there's other solutions that are being talked about, so.
Well, let's, let's boil it down to the simple stuff. Phyllis.
I would like something clarified when we talk about the restriction of the cars on Christmas Tree Hill. Is this an ordinance, or is this based on the fact that the white lines delineating where a car should be parked? And there're just so many boxes created that way? Because there's a big difference between having boxes painted on the street and having an ordinance that says X amount of cars are allowed.
Well, I mean, I think I heard, I heard staff say that there's only so many cars allowed to park up there. You can drive up and down that hill all day long if you want, and you can take your car up and down there, but you can't park where there's not a parking spot.
Well, sometimes, and if you look outside, the white lines that are painted outside this building, two of them could park three cars. They're, they're pretty long. And I am saying, do you say, you know, if there're X amount of dwellings up there, living spaces, there's Y amount of cars allowed to be parked?
They're not associated in this ordinance.
Or is it going to be based on how people can squeeze cars into spaces?
As I, they said, it's first come, first served. And a car per space, and there's only so many spaces up there. So somebody can drive up and down the hill looking for a space, and then they have to park down at the bottom of the hill. Then they have to walk up. It doesn't matter. It's not associated with the ordinance. You know, they can't, they can live up there, but they can't park if there's no parking spots.
Well, you know, I like the flat, so.
So, anyway, okay. So I have just a question for staff here, that I, if we were to say this is approved, recommended for approval by the council, then is there any program in place yet for continuing a process to clarify, to help delineate policy and procedures for this issue? I hear that these guys have been to this new group about Wui and emergency planning and all that. But what's coming down the pike that would allow the dialogue to continue to further refine this process? Is there anything in place? Or do we have to initiate something?
I'm trying to, so there are a few things, but I, can you be more specific about what types of policy goals you're talking about?
Specifically to say that, all right, we have a firmer policy about vehicles, we have a firmer policy about fines, we have a further policy about public works doing things up there.
I think it's, it's being discussed in the context of climate adaptation, in terms of really focusing on ways to improve vehicular movement.
Right.
And, and in terms of evacuations in times of emergency, things that may help there, and thinking about routes off the hill. But frankly, I think there's other things, if you are really, if there're, and this hasn't been discussed to the same level, but, and maybe this relates back in a way to Commissioner Metcalfe's discussion about the overlay district as a whole. But if, if you're really trying to achieve policy goals and outcomes that limit population and limit the number of cars up there, you may very well, and the town may very well, think of other things. I mean, we obviously just looked at a house that was demolishing a small house and building a big house. That has the potential, I'm not saying it does, but it has potential, it's a primary house, but it has potential for increasing the number of people who live in that particular property. So you may, there may be, you know, other things that, if that's really the direction of policy goals that are out there, there may be other things that should be considered from a, not just a public street standpoint, but also from a zoning standpoint that you, you know, the commission and the town could consider in terms of how many bedrooms, you know, how many vehicle requirements and so forth.
Thank you. So where we are then, in a nutshell, is that if we want to instigate further discussion, we then create a request to agendize this, and then it gets floated to.
It could be part of your recommendation, if you are moving forward, it could be part of a recommendation to the town council that other things, maybe that they consider other, other policies or other things in addition, moving forward, and seek that, or hope to put that on to the town council agenda.
Okay. And that said, we know from what we hear in public comment and in letters, that there are other parts of the town that need this addressed. So that's one bullet point.
Right.
Would be, you know, how to incorporate the discussion for this for other areas. In previous meetings, you suggested that this is a long-term planning goal, to add that to other areas of town.
Well, yeah, and I would just say, you know, that one of the things that have made this, while we're focused on Christmas Tree Hill, is that there was such a significant effort done to really document and provide the evidence necessary to make findings regarding Christmas Tree Hill for safety and traffic flow and things like that back in 1994. And so that went through a long community plan process. That same effort really should be, needs to be done for other areas, if that were to be considered some sort of limitation or capacity district. There are efforts, and I think, again, related back to how we're approaching climate adaptation, that are starting to get at that and sort of compare and contrast certain neighborhoods in terms of actually what are the road, what is the road network, what are the widths of streets, things like that, that, but that sort of analysis would need to go into being able to make the findings. And so it's, it's, yes, it's not something that I think, I just want to make the point, it's not something that you could, you could just say and make a limitation without doing that analysis.
Absolutely, right. It's a multi-pronged effort, year effort to get to the, a process that involves the community and every part of the community, and we have.
Correct, and involves the community greatly.
Yeah. And traffic issues, we have a whole laundry list of items that could be put into that hopper. That said, here we are with this, this recommendation to the council, which will ultimately be put before the HCD, and then we don't know what will come out of it, if it does get accepted, and so forth. We tried to follow state law previously and loosen the reins on this, and now the community is speaking that they'd like to have it put back. So in some sense, I support being cautious and going back to something here. And on the other hand, I'm torn about owners' rights and property rights for anybody who has four bedrooms that they want to turn into a rental or a mom and dad room, or a son room that comes home to live, you know. I find that somewhat egregious to take that away from property owners. So it's a dilemma. I don't know what to do about it, except we have to err on the side of life safety, I think, to some degree, and then come back to visit this. That's how I feel about it. So with that said, I think we have some consistency here, but I would ask for a motion, if somebody wants to propose a different motion, then that's fine. If you want to propose an alternate motion for this, to the one that gets proposed. So one might be for, and one might be against, and, or if there are any tags to put onto this. Phyllis, question?
And I'll leave it to Teresa to figure out the right way to do it. Back to page 66, the letter having to do with the windows.
Well, there's a.
And the request to go back to the wording that is in quotes, and if that can be added somehow into this resolution, it's fine with me. I wouldn't, I'm not sure of how to do it so that it's clear and legal.
I think is, if that was something that the commission wanted to do, I think you could make a recommendation that the ordinance be amended to include discretionary review for.
As part of this.
Well, yes, to include discretionary review related to the clear story window provisions as, to be drafted by staff.
Okay, you don't want to use, you don't want to use this wording, you want it to be fine?
It may be, honestly, it may be fine, but I just, it gives a little bit more flexibility. I think we could, we could, give us some time to actually draft something that I think is along the lines of what is in that letter and what we had previously. We may just go directly back to what we had previously on October 22nd. But I think, I think what I'm trying to say is, I don't think we have to be exact. You can make the recommendation at this point.
But as I say, I'm not sure of where you place it within.
We can figure, we'll figure that out.
That's why I was asking the attorney.
Martha, if I may, on page 26, you have struck out some language there. Was that part of the clarification for this?
So that is a separate issue. The current window standard includes a double negative, so we simplified the, the language.
Okay.
So this, this is where, though, Phyllis's change would be added to the same section.
I got it.
I would support Phyllis's request as expressed by Adam.
Yes, I would say whoever is gonna make the motion, to make the motion and then turn to Adam to say the appropriate wording.
Well, Doctor, you have a degree. You could do this.
I would propose to amend the ordinance to allow discretionary review of the windows by staff in conjunction with neighbor's property, and allow for something other than a clear story window, even if a portion of the window is opaque.
It's okay with me if it's okay.
You threw in an opaque in there, I don't know.
That's not fair, Bob.
Not translucent.
Okay, what about the rest of, what about the rest of this resolution?
We don't have to amend it first, to approve the amendment before we approve the whole?
No, he can make a motion to approve the resolution, which is a recommendation to council, and then that's the tag along, the amendment.
Okay. As usual, I see you make sure you've got the votes, the passes, the amendment, and then you go with the whole. However, as soon as I get my way, I'm happy.
So our, no, our resolution is.
Right here.
No, we have a, that would be the draft ordinance.
No, we're.
So we have, on page seven is the resolution.
I would propose a resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Corder Madera recommending adoption of amendments to Chapter 18.18, special purpose overlay districts, and Chapter 18.31, accessory dwelling units of the. 18.31, accessory dwelling units of the Corder Madera Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, with a recommendation that the ordinance reflect discretionary review on the part of the staff in relationship to clear story windows.
That's satisfactory.
Or would it be use of others than clear story windows?
I'm going to second it, or what?
I'll second it if you change it to other than clear story windows.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I, I know that's what you mean.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
No, I'd like to, I would, would have recommended for the JADU to be reconsidered, but I'm, so I'm dissenting to move it forward.
Okay. Commissioner Van Dell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Chair, Chair Chase?
Aye. There you have it. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen...
We have five minutes before we go on.
Okay, we'll, we'll break for five minutes and come back at nine, please.
Yes.
All right, I want to get us back on. Phyllis, do you want to report on the meeting?
Yes, 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 got it right here. Interesting meeting. And this one part, I hope they just didn't stick together. They're putting together a new temporary committee called the Climate Action Committee, and they appointed a bunch of people from the town who applied. It's a good mix, and we have our own Greta Thunberg, I don't know if I'm saying her name correctly, here in Corder, that 15-year-old climate action gal.
What person?
We've got this young gal who has applied and who's going to be on it. And she's 15 years old, and she's going to deal with the students at the high school, and I just think it's wonderful, that's why I brought that up. The March 3rd council meeting is being moved to Monday, March 2nd, so everybody can be sure to vote. And the one thing that really affects us is there was a hu, a public hearing held for consideration of appeal of the application of the new residents at 223 Baltimore, and the commission was upheld by a five-vote vote by the council. Let's see, and is there anything else? Yeah, Meredith Foster, by the way, is the young lady who's the 15-year-old student. As I said, it is a very good mix of people with different backgrounds and stuff, that's Climate Action Committee. I divided these up so I'd be sure to find everything, and that's why I can't find anything. Okay, that is it, there were really no reports from either Todd or the council members that would concern us in any way, unless, I didn't, I didn't think any of them were, so that's it.
Okay. You were upheld, could be here. Adam, you have something to contribute to this?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is we have a date for a sort of, how to describe it, the county-wide objective design and development standards workshop, it's March 19th. We're going to be hosting the Southern Marin sort of workshop down at the community center here at Corder, at our community center. So there'll be a lot of press and, or sort of information coming out about that. There's four throughout the county that are happening, and so it looks like we're, you know, after a little bit of a slow, we, we were out ahead of others, I guess, and so we're now getting reinvigorated and sort of should move a pace now. I also attended on Friday a general assembly of ABAG MTC really related to the regional housing needs assessment. There was a panel in the morning with Scott Weiner and Assembly Member Chu and Bell, and they talked about, you know, obviously with the defeat of SB 50, but they talked about sort of a systemic, all through, systemic failure for, of the state to produce enough housing, and that even though SB 50 has failed, there will be other legislation that will be coming forward this year, maybe not exactly like that, but similar to, again, pushing to require more housing in where it's not being produced. There are, there is also a panel in the afternoon that was sort of just a warning that basically from state housing and community development representative, and some people from ABAG as well, or local, just talking about how we should be really expecting much more significant housing numbers, at least three times as many as we had in the last housing element cycle. So start planning and start thinking about that. There are some more funds available, so they're maybe applying for some more grant funding to conduct our housing element, or help us conduct that. And in addition, what was I going to say about that? In any case, we can expect, we can expect higher numbers, and I will say that we, you know, there, there's, the methodology about how those numbers are getting allocated to each jurisdiction is still under consideration and being reviewed by the special committee. There's a representative from the Marin County Council members, Pat Eklund from Novato, as well as a planning director, staff representative from Marin County, Elise Simonian from San Anselmo, who's on that methodology committee. So we'll, you know, as more information comes out, I'll be, I'll be sort of sharing with the council, and there'll be some more information presented.
I would hope they would consider flood zones and WUW's and that.
Yeah, that's, yes, and I, I think definitely this is part of the conversation, and we've been discussing that with them, but nonetheless, the number comes from the state down to the regional agencies, and then they're just in charge of actually, you know, figuring out a way to divvy up basically the hundreds of thousands of units that need to be allocated to different cities in the region, and definitely that is one of the factors, but there's a lot of other factors. Oh, that was what I was going to say. Other factors, equity is much bigger consideration this cycle than it has been in the past, so that means potentially more units going to areas that have good schools, more opportunities, and requiring more affordable units in those areas. That's much been elevated as a factor, it appears this time around. And then the other thing with housing element that we're going to have to be thinking about much more seriously than before is what we are doing to affirmatively further fair housing in Corder Madera. So there's a lot of policies that we'll have to be considering that we haven't before, and a lot more analysis that I think is what, is going to take a lot more time, frankly, than it has. So they're encouraging cities to start earlier than in the past because there's a lot more work involved, so yay for me to try to manage that. But we're, you know, I think there's a lot of, through the objective design standards process, I think that's going to kick off a lot of our work in that regard, but more to come.
Okay.
Did you report out about the town?
I asked a question, please.
Hang on. Oh, yes, thank you, sorry, I should report. We'd had a, I think, a very successful community workshop on January 30th regarding the new town hall proposal for remodeling this building and creating an addition in the parking lot here. I think a pretty good turnout, about 35, I would say about 35 people, and I think most of the feedback that we received was positive, that it was a good, it reinforced for people that we were still, this is working, we're still working on a project, it wasn't set in stone, and that they were taking real feedback and listening to people. And we're going to, I think, I think it allows us, based on that meeting, to come then with the next step for the preliminary hearing in front of the Planning Commission to, again, take what we heard at that meeting now, and, and sort of all that feedback, and try to present something that we think responds to the concerns we heard, and, and move the process forward. But we'll obviously be looking forward to hearing what you have to say about it as well, so it's looking like, at this point, the first meeting in March is what we're targeting for that. The February 25th date is just too soon to take all that feedback and produce something that is of the quality that I know we've expected here for preliminary hearings, so.
Good. Just a second. Bob, did you have anything you wanted to say about the commission study session up at Sonoma State?
Yeah, it was a, a good program, a lot of it really focused on wildland fire risk and the concern that they were going to have to cut down on building in the WUW, and they said one of the problems with that is a lot of the vacant lots are in the WUW, and this may involve denying people the ability to build there, but they, they also emphasized what you were talking about, trying to, there's going to be a push to create more housing with less discretion in opportunity zones, you know, where there are good jobs, and with the goal of equity and decreasing segregation. So it was, it was, the conferences have all been very good up there, and I, this, this one was also beneficial.
Okay. Hey, Phyllis, you have a question?
Yeah, going back to your original report about the ABAG conference or meeting, whatever, was there any talk of affordable homeownership, or is it all rentals once again?
Doesn't, it, it's all, all types.
Well, usually they just talk about rentals and...
Yeah, talk about that specificity, it's not in the discussion at this point, so.
All right.
Want to ask Charles about the meeting today?
Yeah.
He was the one that attended the entire meeting.
Yeah, so as a representative from the Planning Commission, I went to the climate adaptation meeting. It's a continuation of the original explorations that Caltrans funded through a grant. Also, I was at the town council two times ago, and they approved additional funding to continue the studies and to a deeper dive to two, two portions of the town. So they presented the orig, the first draft of strategies that they, that they wanted recommendation and feedback from the attendees about how to, you know, move it forward and, you know, anticipate reactions and that kind of thing. So one was fire in Chapman Park and Christmas Tree Hill, and Nelson Nygaard did that, and they looked at different studies, they looked holistically at what current infrastructure is there, and measures to improve the infrastructure from an adaptation standpoint, and with, addressing egress and, and many other things. And then the other one was the Estuary Group, the full name escapes me right now, but they, they presented on ways that we can address flooding concerns at Mariner's Cove, or Mariner Cove, and some of those strategies that we vetted, they had three or four options, and so we, we evaluated those, and they'll, they'll revise them and then share them for, for public comment. And so I think it was very productive, I think that they have some really good ideas. I think ultimately, there's a lot of people in that room that, from regional agencies, and I think that it's highly productive to have them all in the room talking to each other, because what we face in Corder Madera isn't all going to be addressed by Corder Madera, and so, you know, I feel like the dialogue, you start feeling our ability to reach out through the study that we house, but ultimately will benefit from greater outreach, and so I'm really excited by that process and how that was put together, and, you know, I think, I think we're going to address a lot of the residents' kind of concerns in a lot of different areas of the town moving forward for the next 100 years, so I look forward to continuing that, so.
Well, Bob's house will have a boat dock right in the front door.
It'll be a floating house.
Yeah, and I, I do recall reading this week that a certain governmental administration has now determined that the definition of waters is different than what we've been working with in the town.
Yeah, but there's still the state agency that can make its role, so.
With that, are we going to hear anything about the corner lot where there was a car dealership? Is that coming down the pike? No?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, then.
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Okay.
Oh, well, we did have the pre-construction, we issued the building permit, we had the pre-construction meeting today, and we expect demo to start very soon on the budget end.
All right, wow.
That's been quite a while.
Do you know the completion date of Amy's?
Oh, not yet. Well, I'll get back to you next, next, next meeting that we have, and I don't think we have, right now we don't have items for the next, the February 25th meeting, but at the next one, I will let you know.
And RH?
Looking like, end of, very end of March, and then Amy's is sometime maybe April or early May, I don't know, yeah, we'll see. We'll see, I'll, I'll give you an update.
March 23rd for RH, was that the right thing?
Memorial Day hamburgers, that's about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've got the motion for the meeting notes to be approved? Does anybody second that?
Second.
Okay, then.
Aye.
Aye, we approved the meeting notes, and we are adjourning this meeting. Thank you.